Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's meeting of Strategic Resources Scrutiny Board, which is our last board meeting of the 2425 municipal year. I am councillor Asgar Khan and I will be chairing today's meeting. As usual, we are broadcast live on Leeds City Council's YouTube channel and I welcome everyone watching through YouTube channel. Before we move on into today's business, I would like to put on record my thanks for councillor Kitchener for her service on this board during my time as chair. She has held office as elected member for many years and she will be missed on the council. Today, we are focused on finance, procurement and digital services. We have an item on the 2425 provisional financial outturn to support our regular monitoring of the in-year budget position. Good to see that we are now projecting a balanced budget position after a very challenging year. That item is followed by a performance review of our integrated digital service team. That use of technology is growing ever more important in terms of making savings and improving the way in which we work. We also have a further report on development of the new procurement strategy, following an initial report earlier in the year. Spending our money wisely is vital and important and this board will likely to look in more detail at the strategy as it develops in 2025. I would like to invite attendees to formally introduce themselves. I will go around the room to my left to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Chair. Morning, everybody. Councillor Pauline Graham, Crossgates and Winmore Ward.
Good morning, councillor Sharon Hamilton, Minwood and Mottown Ward.
Good morning, Craig Timmins, councillor for Cavley and Farsley Ward.
Morning, everyone. Tom Hinchcliffe, Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Good morning, Eleanor Thompson, councillor for Geisley and Rotten Ward.
Hello, everybody. Andy Parham, councillor for Armley.
Morning, Andrew Byram, Chief Digital Information Officer.
Morning, David Halligan, Chief Technology Officer.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Victoria Bradshaw. I'm the Assistant Chief Exec for Finance, Trades and Resources.
Morning, everyone. Lewis Stincala, Head of Procurement.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Andy Dodman. I'm the Assistant Chief Exec for People, Digital and Change.
Morning, Mariana Paxton, Deputy Chief Executive.
Morning, everybody. Councillor Deborah Cooper. I'm the exec board member for resources and Deputy Leader, Leeds City Council.
Good morning, everybody. Diane Chapman, councillor for Rothwell.
Good morning, councillor Davy Blackburn, finally in Wiltley Ward.
Morning, councillor Billy Flynn, Adler Wharfdale.
Morning, everyone. Rob Clayton, I'm the scrutiny advisor to the board.
Thank you for the introduction and moving on to agenda item, can I ask Rob to go through the first five items of the business, please?
Yes, thanks councillor Khan. Yes, just the standard items of business that we normally consider. So, agenda item one is appeals against refusal of inspection of documents and there are none today, Chair. Item two is exclusive of the press and public and there are no matters that fall under that category, Chair. Item three is late items and there are no late items today. Item four is declarations of interest and I will briefly pause to allow any elected members to declare any. I shall take silence as none. Item five is apologies and we have apologies from councillor Andrew Carter this morning, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Item number six is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 3rd of March 2025, page seven of the agenda pack. Do members accept these minutes are true and correct record? Yep, thank you. Are there any matters arising from the minutes, Rob?
Thank you, Chair. It's at minute 75. Just to note that following the item on workforce EDI, a letter has been sent summarising that discussion to councillor Cooper as exec member and copying in the deputy chief executive and assistant chief executive, just to cover that discussion, Chair.
Thank you, Rob. So, members, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go page by page through the minutes. If any matters arising, please put your hand up as well. Page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15, page 16, page 17, page 18, finally page 19. Yep, thank you. Okay, we will now move to agenda item seven, page 21 of the agenda pack, which looks at the provisional finance outturn for 2425, which the executive board considered on 23rd of April. Recently, really good to have the most recent report available. And also, before we move to presentation, can I just thank Victoria and the wider finance team and all the officers who have worked on the finance challenging this year. We have arrived at a balanced position again for the revenue budget, which is really positive, but there are still challenges, not least in the dedicated school grant. As ever, the report provides an overview of our finance along with financial management and financial strategy. The four other scrutiny boards also consider finance matters relevant to the services in their remit. Victoria, over to you to introduce the report and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is a high level presentation, so it summarises the position.
Victoria, can I tell you something? Can you pull your mic a bit closer to here so members can hear?
Can you hear me now? Is that any better? Sorry. This is a high level summary of the financial position. As the Chair said, as we've outturned at a balanced position, the detail is in the report, but this was just to provide the high level summary. So, if we're just, we're going to cover the in-year position, also the budget action plans, have a quick look at the HRA, the dedicated schools grant and the collection fund, which covers both council tax and business rates. So, we are outturning at a balanced position. However, there are overspends within both adults and health directorate and children's and families. We did report this position in September and you can see over the year that the position didn't worsen accepting adults at the, over the winter period where we did see that the adults spend on social care for those older people. The trajectory of where we'd previously forecast didn't happen this year. It stays higher for longer, starting to drop off now in the spring. And that did cause us concern, but we were aware of that and we did take action around mitigations to manage that position so that we could outturn on a balanced position. As the Chair has said, that does mean that we've got challenges in the next financial year to make sure that we do stay within budget going forward. So, just looking at each of the directorates in turn, we do note that adults and health was 18.8 million. The majority of that was in those social work and social care budgets. And as I've said, that was both in working age and in older people's budgets. In the children's and families directorate, we are overspending by 23.8 million. However, we were reporting that throughout the year because we did know the numbers in external residential and the pressure in transport was having an impact on that budget. And we have reflected that in the budgets going forward, so we did put 49 million in across those two directorates to reflect the demand pressures that will continue into this current financial year 25, 26. We've mitigated that through the strategic and central accounts and that's mainly through the use of reserves and some extra grant funding that we received through section 31 grants and the new homes bonus. And because we have delayed some of the projects within the capital programme into future years, that has meant that we've made a saving on the cost of borrowing. So, those are the main areas around the directorate overspends. We have to take this into account with the level of savings that were made by directorates. So, the budget savings that were identified at Budget Council in February 24 was 63.9 million, so it was quite a high number. And then we identified further savings to mitigate some of the overspending year, which we identified savings of 79.8 million. Of that, those 66.8 million were delivered and the remaining, they're not going to be delivered, they were just delayed in the implementation and we should see those delivered in this financial year. With the housing revenue account, which is for our housing stock, we have seen that it's a balanced budget position, although they have experienced the same pressures as the general fund has in increased inflation and staffing costs. The dedicated schools grant on the high needs block is causing pressures within the dedicated schools grant. And that, at the moment, we have statutory override, meaning that any overspend in that area goes on to a reserve, a negative reserve on the balance sheet. We are waiting because that statutory override comes to an end at the end of 25, 26. So, we're just waiting on government around what the proposal is around that because this isn't an issue that's just for Leeds, it's a national issue, noting that the high needs block is overspending across all local authorities. On the collection fund, we are seeing that on the council tax area that collections are where they were last year, they're slightly ahead of February last year. Business rates is slightly below, but they are keeping constant, so collection rates are still very good in those two areas. And I think that's the main thing we wanted to cover. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria, for the report and the presentation. At this stage, I will open it up to board members. Do any board members have any question? Councillor Flynn.
Thank you, Asgar. Want to comment and there are a couple of questions about children and families yet again. Victoria, do apologise in advance for this because it's not your responsibility, but I'll ask the questions nevertheless. Referring to the scrutiny board papers rather than the presentation we've just had, on page 36, it's refreshing to see the children and families directorates have recognised that we are in a time of further austerity. Nice to see people finally admit that. On the figures themselves, on page 37 of the papers today, the first paragraph talks in terms of eight children in the process of transition to family care with a combined weekly cost of 11,500 pounds or thereabouts. That presumably would be converted to a saving of 11,600 pounds once they've been transitioned, which would take the 27,450 pound a week figure just above it to round about 39,000 pound a week. Just wanted to check that that was right. And in the second bullet point, it talks about all seven of the small group living homes now being operational with nine young people accommodated, removing them from external placements, which is excellent. And a saving is claimed of 78,000 pound a week, which reflects about 8,500 pound a week per child, which I think is the average cost of external placements. Looks absolutely superb. The only thing is, does that 78,000 pound reflect the gross or the net figure? Because these children are presumably moved into homes which have been bought with capital receipts presumably. There are running costs for the homes and there are also running costs in terms of social workers and officers, which is very expensive. So, could you confirm whether or not the 78,000 pound is a gross or a net figure? And finally, children and families, I think we're claiming a 200,000 pound underspend or reduction in their projected overspend for the current year. But in fact, most of that, I think, is due to a transfer of public health funding from adults and health. So, in fact, without that, I think the overspend would have been 25 million or thereabouts. Just wanted to check that that was correct as well. And of course, that would mean adults and health overspend would be reduced by 1.6 million as well. Thanks, Asgar.
Victoria, do you want to respond back to councillor Flynn's questions?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you. Just on the first question around the saving on the first paragraph, it is actually a saving of 27,450 with a cost of 11,628. So, it would be a net saving of 16,000 on that first one.
I can't quite, didn't quite catch that, Victoria, sorry.
So, on the first paragraph, you were asking whether it was a 27,450 saving. Yeah, it is a weekly saving of 27,450, but there would be a weekly cost of transferring those children to the family care, which would be a cost of 11,628. So, the net saving would be 16,000. On the next one around the saving, it is the gross cost. So, there would be, as you quite rightly said, it's a saving of, there is a cost of placement of on average 8,500 per week, which is a gross saving of 78,000. There is a cost of having the children in the internal residential placements. So, there is running costs and social worker support around that, but that is the gross cost. And on the last question, I can confirm that if the public health funding hadn't been allocated to both adults and childrens, there would have been a slight overspend in those areas. Okay, thank you.
Do you want a supplementary question briefly?
Only really my usual bang my head against a brick wall one. I would much prefer the director of children and families to be here at this meeting because although financial monitoring is discussed at those scrutiny boards, they're only discussed twice a year, whereas we're discussing almost every month. And if this is a strategic and resources scrutiny board, if we just look at strategy and resources and the strategic budget, in fact, we're looking at an underspend of over 40 million pounds. So, without people from the various directorates being here, it does raise some serious questions about what on earth the scrutiny board is supposed to be doing if we don't have them here to actually scrutinise what they're doing. Because the figures that we've been given are obviously not inaccurate, but they are not complete. And I wouldn't expect anybody here today to be able to explain them to me because it's an internal directorate matter. So, it's really a comment, Asgar, rather than a question.
Thank you, councillor Flynn, but I'll bring in Mariana just briefly to respond.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Thanks, councillor Flynn. Yeah, just to reiterate, we did take that away as an action and, you know, Rob and colleagues are looking at it ready for the new municipal year about how best we do that to balance, you know, scrutiny being able to fully fulfil their function, you know, potentially alongside performance information was what we said we would have a look at, whilst also making it realistic in terms of officer commitment to that. And, you know, I definitely don't think it would be right to have all directors sat at all of this meeting. I know scrutiny fulfils a very different function to exec board, but we do have this conversation at exec board, you know, and we are, as has been said before, you know, our reports are really thorough, very transparent and very much out there in terms of that full accountability, right into the level of detail, probably, you know, more than most authorities do. So, I just think it's important to note that. But we, as I say, we did take away that action and we are looking at it ready for the start of the new municipal year.
Brilliant. Thank you, Mariana.
I actually listened to the executive board discussion last week and I don't think that any of these issues were actually discussed at it, even though the director spoke at some length about CLAs and various other things. So, I take the point about officers' time and all the rest of it. This is a scrutiny board and officers, particularly directors, are here to be scrutinised. So, I hope, I'm sure you're not suggesting that their time is more important than the time of this particular board here, but I'm glad it's being discussed. I've asked for it to be taken back to Kevin Tompkins, to him to have a word about it as well, because it's just unacceptable that the figures we've been given here are... trying to think of the right word. I don't think they're, they don't tell entirely the whole story. And I've spent a lot of time on this over the last two or three days.
Thank you, councillor Flynn, and point is noted anyway. Okay, thank you. Victoria, what impact will the ongoing tariff and trade war issues have on our budget, if any?
What I would say is that we're monitoring the national and international position. We do this as part of the medium term financial strategy as well and we're mindful of what's happening around price increases on inflation, et cetera. And we do try and bring those in through the monitoring if there's any in-year issues that we need to take account of. But at the moment, we forecast where we think that position will be going forward, but we are horizon scanning, as I say, all the time to see what the impact could be on the budgets, but it would mainly be through inflationary increases or decreases.
Okay. Just a bit supplementary to that question as well, are we taking any steps to manage any stock that might arise due to the international issue?
Are we taking any steps? We are, as I said, we are looking at what's happening internationally and assessing what that impact potentially could be on, like for the cost of oil, et cetera, energy prices. And we do, on the energy prices, where it is appropriate to pre-buy that energy, so for the following winter, and to make sure that we're ahead and getting the best prices. So, we are monitoring it all the time. Thank you.
Councillor Timmins.
Thank you, Chair. And if I could just echo your comments from before just about the work that Victoria and her team do, I think we're lucky to have someone of your calibre in the organisation. So, thank you for that. Just if I may quickly come back on councillor Flynn's point, because at this scrutiny board a few months ago, councillor Cohen was substituting and I was asking specific questions about the directorate and he did give me assurances that they spend a great deal of time going through the budget overspends in detail. And then I wanted to just ask some questions on the action plans. So, obviously, we've been looking at these all year and there are quite a lot that's come through that have high risk or have been cancelled. I think in adults and health, circa four and a half million worth. I appreciate some of them may be delivered later, but what I wanted to ask or get is just a bit of reassurance that the directorate and department heads will be going through those in detail, looking if there's any lessons that can be learnt, why they've not been delivered and maybe when we are, they're looking at action plans in future, what they can do to make sure that they're more deliverable and that we actually follow through with those fuller.
Okay, thank you, Chair. We do have a robust process of when we're starting to develop the budget action plans and we start it at this time of year for the following year. And the directorates do go through and identify what that proposal is. They are reviewed by HR, finance, legal, assets, all the different support services to make sure that we get all the different views on the deliverability of those action plans. And they are reviewed throughout the year. In adults and children's, we do now have, in children's, we've had it established for a while, a task and finish group where we review the budget action plans in detail, where we are on the achievement, what the barriers are to us delivering them in the timescales we've set, et cetera. And we've established a newly formed budget review group in adults and health where we've met a few times since Christmas now to go through them in a lot of details, those budget action plans, making sure that we've got more detail behind on the key milestones that we have to hit to make sure that we're on target to deliver them. And we're just establishing a member oversight board on that one as well for the adults and health and we will be reporting them throughout the year. A few of the adults ones, it's been, a couple of them are around income generation where we expected to achieve a higher level, but we feel now that we've probably got to the ceiling of that income generation when we're looking at the assessments, the impact of the universal credit changes, et cetera, which couldn't be forecast when those budget action plans were put in place. So, there's some things that are in our control, but there are some things that have happened that have meant that the deliverability of those are outside our control now because of other policy changes that have happened. But there is a very robust process around them and I think that's demonstrated in that even though there are some that have either been delayed or not implemented, the deliverability of those that we have done in year 60, I think it was in the slides, wasn't it? 60 something million is quite significant for the directorate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariana, do you?
Yeah, thanks, Chair, for just my offer, you know, further bit of reassurance, just a couple of things really. I mean, we do spend a lot of time at corporate leadership team on this. I can't tell you how many conversations we have. And also, you know, Victoria runs a group called Financial Challenge with directorate reps on, that's been running now probably maybe two and a half, three years, something like that. It's weekly, often all afternoon, on a Monday afternoon. Because, you know, we recognise that these plans are quite challenging to deliver, there's a lot of variables. So, what I would say is officers do them to the best of their ability at the time on the best of the information available, but things do change, you know, particularly with children's and adults or, you know, with housing in terms of temporary accommodation, that kind of thing. So, we are dealing with, you know, a lot of complexity. So, we very definitely give it our best shot and do try and do that robustness check, but inevitably we don't capture everything. The other thing I would say is, you know, it's important that we do, we are ambitious in the plans, rather than just aiming for something that, you know, wouldn't quite be enough or high quality enough. But it's a really big issue officer wise and we do feel rightly and appropriately held to account by members on it.
Thank you, Mariana. Councillor Timmins, do you have any supplementary?
No supplementary, but yeah, thank you for the answers. It is reassuring.
Any other questions from board members? Just on reserves, Victoria, are we planning to move back to the policy of contributing 3 million annually to the general reserves in 25, 26 and beyond?
We are going to move back to the position, but it will be for 26, 27, because we knew that 25, 26 was such a challenging year, we won't be making a contribution in this financial year, but we are moving back to it in the medium term financial strategy for future years. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, have we have any indication of when the comprehensive spending review will be brought forward and whether we can expect any other resources?
The comprehensive spending review is due in June and then we'll get the, hopefully a three year settlement, which we should get in the autumn through the provisional settlement, which will give us a better idea. We're not expecting the quantum of funding to change, so the amount nationally, but the way that funding is distributed, we are expecting there to be changes. So, on that basis, we might see some additional resources depending on the different methodologies that they use in that distribution formula. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Okay, before I conclude this agenda item, I'd like to ask if councillor Cooper has any comments to make. Okay, before I conclude this agenda item, I'd like to ask if Councillor Cooper has any comments to make?
Thank you, Chair. And yes, just a few short comments really. And first of all, I do want to thank Victoria and her team for the work that they've done in their department really to ensure that we have outturned a balanced position. As Board Members know, it's a legal requirement that we balance the books at the end of the year. So I'm really pleased to see us heading in that direction for the full ending of month 12. I think the other point I want to make is also to thank Directors for their achievements in their budget action plan savings. It is remarkable if you really stop and think about the millions and millions, sixty-odd million pounds worth of savings were delivered during a very, very difficult year. The budget was set in February 24, which was under the previous government. We were still under austerity. We were still receiving cuts to our core budget, year on, year on, year for the previous 14 years. So to achieve a balanced budget, I have to say at the end of it, and to have done so by achieving such significant budget savings, 14th year in a row that we have been making those budget savings, while still providing high-quality services to the residents of Leeds, I think is something to be extremely proud of. And I want to thank the Directories for all their work that I know they've undertaken to achieve those budgets. It has not been easy and we know that we have still got more to do. But to have made that achievement at this point in time, I think, is a really good achievement for the Council. So I just want to thank everybody involved in that process. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cooper, and thank you, Victoria, Mariana. And as Councillor Cooper, I just want to echo from her. You know, can you pass our thanks to your team as well from this board as well? Thank you. The recommendation on page 21 of the Agenda Pack, are we happy to approve the recommendation, Members? Yes? Thank you. Yeah, I said point noted anyway. Thank you. We can now move to item eight on page 75 of the pack, which is a report of the integrated digital services provided, an update on the performance across a range of areas. Our digital transformation is going to be vital to how we operate in future. So this is a really good and comprehensive report. The board will previously have been interested in cyber security, which came up when we considered the IDS item last year and during our budget consideration. So just to put on record our thanks for the members engaging on the cyber security that was carried out by the team recently. We have a presentation on this item as well. Andrew and David, do you want to go through the presentation and the report, please? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you for the opportunity to bring a wider report. In previous years, we've only reported about the service desk performance. And since coming to the role, I felt it was selling the service short. And that's why I asked if I could bring a bigger report, so I really appreciate that. Could you go to the next slide, please, Rob? I just wanted to also talk about the reductions we've made across IDS in terms of JNC staff and the CDA leadership team. I've made a concerted effort over the last period of time since I came into the role, February last year, to take out deputy posts and be much leaner. And we operate in a different way now in terms of how we run our meetings and how we interact with each other. You'll see there's a vacant post for Head of Service Delivery. We're recruiting for that this week, which I'm really excited about. We had 154 applicants, got some really high-calibre people and that's going to be an absolutely key post for us. That person will own the service and will be basically holding all of us to account and ensuring that our processes are robust and we're working through things in the best way possible. I think as you can see, there is a big service, 372 posts, FTIs in post at the minute. We've still got quite a significant number of vacant posts despite deleting quite a few this year for our savings targets. We also have specialist contractors. The main reason for that is, as you said, Councillor, the technologies are advancing so quick, we can't keep pace with some of the skilling. And we'll talk about on the next slide around what we're trying to do to address that. So we have specialist contractors and we also have augmented resources. But again, you can see from 2019 to now, we've reduced our JNC cohort from 40 to 19, so significant change. Could you go to the next slide, please? David, do you want to just talk through this slide?
Thank you, Andrew. This is our, it's a snippet of our technology strategy and the six pillars of our technology strategy that's overriding desire to simplify and standardise around a core set of technologies. So previously, the technologies we inherited as a digital service was quite fragmented and decisions were made on basis of best functional fit. Whereas what we're looking at now is how do we combine multiple services and multiple business functional requirements into a platform and into a common set of technology standards? That allows us to focus on digital skills and training our own people across a fewer number of technologies. So there's an economy of scale that comes with that. Being able to negotiate pricing with a small number of vendors, it gives us greater buying power. It gives us better access to resources because they've got a common skill set. And it allows us to leverage pre-built integrations between systems and AI technology on top. So a reduced number of technologies is the core of what we're trying to achieve over the coming years. Within that, we're delivering on top of platforms instead of buying point solutions. So point solutions are things that only achieve one business outcome, whereas a platform can achieve a business outcome for lots of different service areas. So we prefer platforms and building on top of platforms or buying on top of platforms, again leaning into the simplification of the overall architecture and our people skills. The box around people says nearly the same thing, investing in digital skills for staff, but also for the people that leads. So as we move towards a common set of technologies, we can invest in digital skills both for our own staff within IDS across all service areas and across the people that leads as well. We're creating clearer roles and responsibilities across IDS. So as Andrew said, we've simplified our management structure and that gives us a lot of agility as an organisation as well. So very clear direction and very tight group. Security, key to everything that we do and we're baking security in all layers. We're working very closely with NCSC, National Cyber Security Centre. We're gathering and analysing data about security threats all the time. And we're looking to invest in a security operations centre over the coming years. I'm not sure that we'll get to it this year, but within the coming years. We're adopting a multi-led approach to security using cyber security tools and technologies. And everything that we do from this point forward is secure by design. So we're providing a much better incident response. In line with central government standards, we now adopt a cloud-first principle, which means all new software that we purchase will be in cloud or within a vendor software as a service solution. We're continuing to move our enterprise applications into cloud and our business applications such as Office and Dynamics and Power Platform are running as a cloud-native. Legacy infrastructure as a service is being moved into AWS. And we're modernising it as we move it into AWS in order to focus on reducing the cost of ownership of those applications. We have targeted ourselves with 2028 being the date that we're fully cloud-based and out of our data centre. There are some services we know we'll never be able to move, things that are very disk-intensive. For example, our CCTV system and traffic signalling, highly unlikely that we'll move into cloud and we'll leave that within a small data centre here within Leeds. We expect to have a transparent and data-led organisation. So we've already got a very strong focus on our data platform and we're making sure that we're providing data to inform the business to make equitable and inclusive decisions. We aim to publish our decisions and the rationale that led to those decisions, including the data that sits behind it where we can. We protect the privacy and data of people that leads and that we're looking to move all of our enterprise applications into that centralised cloud platform for data. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that. I won't read through all of the bullets on these following slides, but I will pick out some key points. In our Business Services team in Finance, we, you know, we came in under budget in 23, 24 of 1.6 million. We're looking to make a further £3 million with a saving this year. We do manage a large amount of software and we negotiate very hard on trying to reduce pricing. One thing I led was the challenge in our supplier of our mobile phone contracts. And we negotiated a saving there of £540,000, which was significant, a big, big saving. Could you go to the next slide, please, Rob? There's some big numbers on this slide, which just talks around the numbers of devices we're actually processing. You know, just short of 6,000 devices have been removed from the organisation. They've been anonymised and tend to have taken all the asset tags off and data wiped and have gone to asset disposal. Where we can sell something for a residual value, we do and it runs that service at zero cost. Through the Dropping Clinic here in the Civic, we've processed 4,200 laptops in that year, which is an extraordinary number. And we do refresh through there. We're about to go into a Windows 11 rollout and we've been trying to get all the devices that won't go to Windows 11 to that level. So we've been gradually refreshing those through the year. Again, we've talked about there that we did a smartphone review around cheapest devices we've rolled out and that's again saved another half a million there. We're renegotiating our breakfast contract, saved £80,000 there. One of the things I'm really proud of, for those who were at the general election last year, we did that in a very different way. We actually flooded the place. I was there all night. We had some T-shirts made, which Victoria glared at me about. But anyway, it said IT and it was really well received on the night. And I think that's probably our best general election we've done over the years. So, you know, hopefully we won't do another one for a number of years, but yeah, it went really well. Next slide, please. We're obviously doing lots of work through the Academy and Council, like tax annual billing. This is a major piece of work through as the start of each year. And the team work extraordinarily long hours, you know, 50, 60-hour weeks to process that. But it does bring in that extraordinary amount of money. We do try and review that each year to try and reduce the amount of time people have to do. And it's something that we're going to revisit again post-year end. You'll see some other things on there around rollout of managed print. We've reduced the numbers of printers from, again, from 650 to 350 and we're in that drive to try and be a paperless organisation. We've also allowed the night shift that have worked down at Apex for many years have now left and we're running that fully automated. Again, we made the saving on the staff, but there are other savings in there as well. Next slide, please, Rob. Do you want to just briefly just talk about website migration? I know you're putting you on the spot there, but that was a big deal, that.
Yes, so over the last year, we've been looking to decommission our on-premise SharePoint instance. Within SharePoint, we hosted our Leeds City Council website, was by far the biggest website hosted there within SharePoint with 1,500 content pages. So we focused on that as a priority to move as part of that web modernisation piece. Part of moving that, we also had to move six microsites, things like child-friendly Leeds, safer roads Leeds, the Kirkgate Market as part of it. So this is just a snippet of what that web team achieved. There were, I think we put live somewhere in the region of 20 sites over the course of last year, including the migration of the Leeds to Go UK site, which launched in the very early part of this year. We chose to delay it from December launch into an early 2025 calendar year launch just to mitigate a threat that we were seeing from a cyber security risk perspective. So we delayed the go-live, but we were ready to go-live in December of last year, which was in line with the target that we set for ourselves. So massive piece of work and really well delivered and well executed on by the team.
Yeah, thank you, David. Some other points on there to pull out from the previous slide was the removal of analogue phone lines, which was a massive piece of work we've been doing. I started that project probably about five years ago, so that's been an ongoing piece of work to modernise our infrastructure. The bottom there is also the move of the contact centre and all customer contact to the new Genesis platform, which again was delivered in year... Next slide, please, Rob. I won't go through all of these, but the Access database was a massive issue for us with that. That was no longer in support and it was our PSN certificate this year, Public Services Network, which allows us to connect to DWP and others. Said we had to have that removed, so we had a real push on that and we have removed all instances of access and we have just got our PSN certification, which is great, but was a, that was a massive piece of work. And then, next slide, please, Rob. And then again, this is what we normally come talk to you about, Service Centre. And as you can see, and if you read through the report, there's so much more that we are doing in IDS. But the Service Centre performed extremely well over the year, hit their service targets. And we did see a call reduction. If you look in the report, it reduced to 66,000 calls this year because we're doing more password resets in a different way. But we do expect it to increase through the delivery of CBT, some of the projects in there. But we have got staff ready to take those calls. I think that is the final slide, so welcome any questions.
Thank you, Andrew and David, for the presentation and going through the report. At this stage, before I open to Board Members, if Councillor Cooper wants to make any comments or she do want to wait here? That's fine. I'll open to Board Members, Councillor Flynn?
Thank you again. Thanks very much indeed for the presentation, Andrew and David. Just before I start on this, I'd like to compliment you both on the huge improvement in CDA management contact with, certainly with elected members. Sort of down the line as well. Whenever I ask a question, the answer comes back within hours usually, if not minutes. So I'm personally very, very grateful indeed to you because I don't think it was quite as good in recent times without actually going into any sort of detail. Going on to the slides, just one particular issue. I'm told constantly by other elected members and by officers as well about the need for IT training for staff. And I know you touched upon it in that quite busy slide right at the very start. And I just wondered if there was a programme that you had in mind or you were planning to sort of put in place? One particular area is co-pilot. You know, I know what it is, haven't been trained on it, I would like to be trained on it. So anything you can add to that, I'd be very grateful.
Thank you, Councillor Flynn. I think first off, in terms of IT training, as part of Be Your Best, there is a full day of digital training within there. I think that's a good start, but it just touches on it. There's so much more we do need to do in terms of rolling out some of the CBT technologies. There's loads of training taking place. I was on a training course on Friday, another one this Friday. We've also done some targeted co-pilot training with some senior leaders, certainly with Strategy and Resources, we had a half-day training. There's so much more we can do. The email exchange with you the other day, I did say that, that training should fit into everything. We need to raise the level of digital skills for every employee. That is a mammoth task, so it's working through with HR colleagues about how we do that. But it's definitely where we need to go. What David did say in the slide deck though, we are moving to more platform-based technologies, so fewer technologies, which then does allow us to consolidate the training. So we can get people on training around Dynamics and it might well cover all of the other, which is Finance and Operations will be on Dynamics. And we're going to do something on Member Case Management on Dynamics. So by having that training, you'll be able to cut across a number of areas. But it's a huge, huge task for us, Councillor Flynn.
Is supplementary?
Just a very, very quick one, yeah. And Debbie will probably answer it probably quicker than I will. But is there any chance of making this mandatory training? Because everyone's reluctant, including me, I have to say, to get involved in this kind of training. But unless you are trained properly, how can you possibly take advantage of the kind of advances that are being made, as you said yourself, very rapidly in the IT world?
I'm going to defer to Andrew whether we can make that mandatory or not.
It is a good question, Councillor Flynn. I think as Andrew says, it's something that we certainly want to look at. I think as Andrew says, it's something that we certainly want to look at, but the other part of the equation that I'm working with Andrew and the IDS team on is about digital expectations and skills of our workforce coming into the organisation. So we've been very clear about what expectations we have of staff, depending on the job they do and what systems they will use for their day-to-day working lives. So we're thinking now about how we capture that, being very clear about expectations and also the process of onboarding into the organisation. As Andrew says, if we can support people earlier on in their employment journey, then we're not doing that catch-up training where we are now. So we're trying to look at it in that sort of holistic employment life cycle piece. I think probably what will happen as the AI journey continues, we may well need to mandate more for the reasons that you've set out, but we're just fairly early days in that, so we'll just need to work through that.
Mariana, then I'll bring in councillor Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to add on the training, you know, it is a really difficult judgement call as to what you make mandatory. As you know, we may, you know, we have mandatory EDI training, you know, often with information governance, health and safety, those things that very definitely have a statutory basis is often what makes that decision. The thing that we're balancing is the complex nature of the workforce that we often talk about. And what one person needs is mandatory wouldn't be what another person needs, and so it's just trying to get that balance right. If I may be controversial in relation to members, when we put member seminars on, we often don't get good attendance. And so, you know, there is definitely something for us to reflect on and we get the same issue with officers and particularly senior officers actually often cancelling at the last minute because everybody is so busy, even though we intend to go and we want the training, it is difficult to get that time commitment. So what we're always trying to balance with the training is kind of, you know, trying to make it really efficient, time efficient, so that, and maybe online and that kind of thing, so that we can still get the training and people can get the skills, but without a, you know, crazy time commitment that people just don't have. So we'll take that, you know, away and continue our reflection on it. But just to say, we do give it a fair bit of consideration, but it's striking that balance and particularly for a complex diverse organisation.
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. And firstly, I've got to really knit myself a bit here, councillor Flynn, for you actually embracing, you know, digital transformation within the organisation, I have to say. Well done, finally. I'm really pleased to see it. But all joking aside, I know that the serious interest that councillor Flynn does give to this area and the amount of work that he does undertake on it, so thank you. Appreciate as always all the time and effort that you put into it and I'm pleased we've finally got you on board in terms of moving forward with AI and so on like that. First of all, I want to say thank you as well to Andrew and to David and the small team that do all of this work for us and enable us to do it in a safe, a really safe way. And of course, we're on a journey, aren't we, in terms of our transformation as an organisation? And, you know, we can only go so far and so fast to be able to do it in the right and the safe way. So I really feel confident that we're doing all that we can in terms of the new technology to enable the organisation to run smoother and more efficient as we go along and feel confident in the team doing that. If I can just make a point about the training, I think that we've offered training in the same way for many years now, and I think it's part of how we offer the training is to encourage people to take it up. And it might not be the right way for that person to be able to do their training. I know, for instance, and I've attended a lot of different training sessions, but I much prefer the self-help, self-service type training that I can do at my own time, my own speed, my own pace, my own skill set. I can jump on board at my skill set, not have to start at the same level maybe as everybody else. And I'm sure if you went around this room, you know, the different digital skills that people, the different level that people might be at, you know, would demonstrate that, wouldn't they? So all of us sitting in the same training session, doing the same things, wouldn't really benefit all of our time and, you know, not just members, but officers and employees as well. So I think it's important that we start the training on an individual skill set level and actually the training that's going to suit them better. So I think there's work for us to do on offering, offering the training and until such time that we get it right for that, then I think we need to encourage people to do as much training as they can, both employees and members, to get themselves, you know, up to speed in terms of those, that digital skill set. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. 10 seconds, councillor Flynn.
Thanks very much indeed. I really should have been clearer before, I think, in terms of the kind of areas where AI may be of tremendous advantage. And I'm looking at the likes of adults and health and children and families. I don't know how much of their stuff is bureaucratic, but I know the more bureaucratic a job is, the better AI is in terms of producing it. And certainly so far as member training is concerned, Mariana, guilty as charged, I have to say, you know, have been known to promise to go to these things and not turn up for whatever reason. And one final thing on AI, having spent about two hours last week talking to Sandy at Santander, if you ask her what time it is, she tells you it's Wednesday morning. It's that, it's that kind of AI that I do not like, you know, it's when you get a, you know, quite right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Just need to go on a minute, Rob.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. Councillor Hinchley, please.
Thank you, Chair. A few years ago, it was my first scrutiny board here and I asked a question about AI, a bit tongue-in-cheek, and I got a lot of perplexed looks from colleagues, particularly opposite as well, not naming names. So I'm pleased it's now been discussed in an open forum. On the general election, it was my favourite one as well, so thank you for the work that you did there and colleagues, I'm sure will agree. I think it's a really welcome report, Chair, because it goes so much further than people taking calls and fixing laptops and things like that. It actually impacts residents' lives, whether it's council tax notifications, business rates, free school meals in particular, it's really, really important. So thank you for the detail on that. I just wondered if you could say a little bit more about the partial automation, whether it's going on free school meals, whether it's going to be a full automation in the future and what the time scale is on that. And then, if anything does go wrong with, you know, people's entitlements to free school meals or council tax notifications, whether that's been reviewed and then residents notified in a kind of timely manner that it's been corrected. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. Is it going to be fully automated? I don't know yet, so we're still looking at it. That was an initiative by two people in the team and the academy team are really keen to use AI and that was their own idea to come up with that and do the automation. I think it's really important when we talk about AI, and I've said it in a number of forums, that it's not free, it needs a team behind it, you need to check it. So it's absolutely got a very valid and vital place for us in the future of IDS and the council, but there's lots of things we need to wrap around it in terms of those guidelines. And what I talked about, the head of social delivery post we're going to be recruiting, again, that person's going to come in and own those centres of excellence and ensure that we are following the proper policy. I don't want to put you on the spot, David, do you want to add anything on AI? Are you happy with that?
No, I'm happy with it. I would say nervousness around the impact on people, information governance aspect and the ethics around AI. So we set up our own AI ethics board and we're starting to evaluate the types of use cases that we'll use AI for. And I think, you know, we're very early days. We can see other organisations kind of rushing ahead with AI and there's lots of success stories that are out there. I'm quite sceptical of some of them, whether they're actually able to apply the right level of governance around the ethical impact and information governance impact. So read carefully what you see in the news and we're definitely being cautious and risk averse in that respect to properly evaluate the risk, both on people in Leeds and on our own employees, to make sure that we're applying the technology in the right way. So, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, supplementary, councillor Hinchley?
Yeah, more of a comment, thank you, Chair. It's just welcome to see a common sense approach on the AI stuff. I completely agree with you that, you know, some organisations are boasting around how they've taken up AI and things like that, but I'm sceptical too. So thank you. And as I say, it does have a direct impact, so it's really important. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Blackburn.
Thanks. It's about the managed print. I've got to say, I find it a great improvement to what was there before with the new machines, but one of the things I've noticed, and I've come across it myself when I went in office the other week, is that the number of times when you want to print something and you put the right details in and then you put your number in and there's nothing there. And with that, I think we had about two or three days in our office where that happened. And clearly, if you want something printed off to send to, out to residents, you want it when you want it, not when the machine gets round to it. I mean, it might just be an odd problem, but I mean, are we having that across the board?
Yeah, thank you for raising that, councillor Blackburn. I'm not aware of that. Obviously it prints to, when you press send, it goes to the cloud and then it pulls it back down onto the printer and it should be instant. What I will do though is I'll pick that up and look at it with the print team in terms of your specific issues you've had and see if we can, see if there's an issue there. But no, I'm not aware of any delays like that.
Just add to that as well, what I asked before I came in to come down to meeting for, about in our office about that. And the other thing that says, it seems to be very slow sometimes, particularly when it hasn't been used for a while.
I'll look into it. I mean, if a device is sat there idle and hasn't been used for a while, it is going to have to warm up, but it should be fairly instant. I will look into it for you.
Thank you, councillor Blackburn and Andrew. Councillor Timmins.
Thanks, Chair. It's great to actually read a report with lots of success stories, so thank you for all the, what you're doing on that. In particular, the one that stood out to me was Active Leads, the digital marketing campaign, which has generated two and a half million quid in revenue. I think that's amazing. It'd be good to see that, something similar, working with like commercial managers from other revenue generating streams, museums, galleries, bowling greens, meals at home, stuff like that, to see how we could increase revenue from them areas as well. But my question is actually around the people side of IDS. It was great to see so many internal promotions within the team and the programme that you've got with the university in terms of placements. But what it doesn't mention is apprenticeships. So I'm just wondering what we have in the team in terms of apprenticeships at the moment and if there's any scope for both entry level and high level apprenticeships within the team?
Yeah, thank you for that question, councillor Timmins, and that's quite opportune. One of the things I've been working on with my associate colleagues is an IDS long-term training plan and we are going to, this year, bring in 10 apprentices to train into specific areas like cyber, like DevOps, like power platform and other areas, data analytics. And the plan is to do that every year for the next three years. So I've been working with Victoria and Andy and other colleagues on how we do that, because it's really important to give people a career path in IT and it's the only way we'll grow our own. You know, we have got an aging workforce in IDS, we recognise that. So we want to bring more, you know, younger blood in who can come and train into those areas. So we actually are addressing that. But we also, we do take T-levels and students as well who work with us as part of their four-year university course, will spend a year with us and quite a number of those have converted to full-time. So we do do quite a bit in there, we can do more, yeah.
Thank you, Andrew. Any supplementary questions? That's fine. Thank you. Before I bring in councillor Chapman there, Andrew, IDS Service Centre, it is good to see performance still remaining good on paragraph 8.1.4. Are we prepared to, are we prepared for the expected increase in calls in terms of staff resource?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. As part of CBT, we've funded for additional resources into the Service Centre specifically for the calls that are coming now on the new I-Trent MHR payroll system. So we've addressed that in terms of the team and put some additional resourcing, which has been funded by CBT.
Councillor Chapman.
Thank you. I've got two or three things. First of all, I just want to say thank you for finally getting the digitally excluded staff catered for. That's been one of my things for several years now, so it's good to see it's finally got there, so that's great. And this is a really good report, it's the most detailed we've seen, it covers such a wide area, so it is appreciated. A couple of specifics. Wifi, the report mentions that it's, we've extended or improved the reliability and that it's in all council buildings. Do we mean council offices? Because I'm aware, again, I bring this up regularly and it is in my ward, but it is a large venue, it's quite well used, doesn't have wifi. And it was originally supposed to have wifi, now it doesn't, it's Blackburn Hall. I'm not expecting an answer today, but if someone could have another look at whether we can get it in there or not, it would be appreciated. More generally, on the printer rollout, will we or are we training the staff in the community hubs for the, where public use those new printers? I went in last week and they were told, I was told it had, basically the printer had turned up, they didn't know it was coming and they were left with it by whoever delivered it and had to work it out themselves, which they're doing. I incidentally couldn't use it because I've not got a PIN and didn't know I needed one, which is possibly a comms thing to members. And then finally, and I know these are going all over the place, we refer to Active Leads and how well that has gone in terms of driving up or keeping people using or being members of Active Leads, so we're getting the revenue. Have we looked at doing that for places like Lotherton Hall or Temple News? And we've looked at this in the past, it probably isn't this scrutiny board anymore, is it culture? But instead of people having to sign up annually when they go to a place, so like Lotherton Hall, if you've got a membership, at the end of that 12 months, you only know it's run out when you get to Lotherton Hall and they say, are you a member? And then they check and they say, oh no, you'll have to sign up again. Is there a way we can automate that so it's an ongoing membership? That is with, obviously with the department, the culture department, but I think it would be a good way of making it easier for our residents. Also, we could link up the buildings at different prices. Again, it's, this is not a, IDS will need to work with the teams to make it happen, but I don't think it's worth exploring it. That's it.
Thank you for those questions and your comments on the report. Blackburn Hall, I don't know, I'll have to look at that one. So we are looking to push good wifi across all of the council buildings and we're doing a rollout of some new technology there called Meraki to try and improve it in certain buildings like Marion and others, and we're doing the rollout here as well. On the printers, it's not going well in community hubs and libraries, I don't mind admitting that. I'm working with Nick Hart and Lee Hemsworth on that, I've got a meeting with them on Friday, but we're hopeful that by Friday we'll be in a much better place. So we've now got banners that are going out to all of the sites, explaining how to use them. We are getting all of the scanning lists set up and we are doing the training. These printers were quite complicated, it wasn't as simple as the printer arriving. We've then got to set it up for academy printing, which involves two different teams visiting the printer, believe it or not. So that's been really hard to, given the numbers of staff that we have in that particular team, to get them out to all those sites to do them, but we're hoping that we're all sorted by Friday. And I can, I don't mind feeding back on that to you because I'm meeting with Lee on Friday to give him that update. I'll also look at the pins for members and what's happened there, whether or not you've been missed out on or not, make sure we revisit that. In terms of the automation around sign up for cultural sites, I'll need to speak to the team about that one, but I will pick it up, it's a good idea. Okay.
Thank you. There's no, or councillor Hamilton?
No, mine isn't a question really, it's just to say that you all seem to be very good negotiators. You've saved, you know, I'm, this was a pleasure to read at the weekend, my Sunday afternoon. You know, I'm really impressed of the savings you've made and come at a crucial time when the council needs it, you know, so keep up the good work and maybe we can have you elsewhere in departments where we're having real difficulties, real difficulties where they need negotiators to reduce, you know, because, you know, the new visual technology where you've saved there and the telephones, et cetera. So well done, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. At this, there's no more questions from board members? Oh, Andrew wants to come. Sorry.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that. And I think it's only fair to say that we have massive contracts within IDS and we do negotiate really hard on them every year. I can't not say that there is a flip side to this. As we move to the cloud, we're kind of held to ransom somewhat by the suppliers. So, if you think of a key line of business application like Mosaic, for example, that they told us they were turning off the end of life on-premise, it's closer to cloud. Cost goes up. So, there's a flip side to it. Yet, we've done some great negotiations, but we can't lose sight of that there's challenges there around vendors, vendor tie-in, which then makes it harder to negotiate. But yeah, I will take the thanks. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you. councillor Cooper, do you want to make any comments at this stage, please, before we conclude?
Just to thank scrutiny board members really for their interest in this area of work that, you know. And I'm really pleased that with this new format of reporting, you know, to be a fuller report, it gives you that wider, you know, bigger picture. So, you can see the full landscape of what IDS are doing. So, I'm really pleased that the scrutiny board members are liking that new way of taking a look at IDS. But yes, just thanks for all your comments and views as always. Thank you. And I forgot to mention at the beginning that I just wanted to congratulate councillor Thompson for completing the London Marathon yesterday. I am absolutely amazed that she's still, is here today. Given the heat and the conditions and everything that, you know, was at play yesterday in London, don't mind getting there and coming back and being ready to be at her role first thing this morning. Well done, Eleanor.
Well done Eleanor. Thank you Andrew. Thank you David for the comprehensive report and, you know, for the, your presentation and answering those questions to the elected members. Are we happy to with the report on recommendation page 75? Yep. Thank you. We move on to agenda item nine, which is a report from our procurement team. As the last report highlighted, digital transformation can deliver saving, but so too can smarter procurement. This provides a further update to members to plan for the new procurement strategy and develops at a national level with the new procurement act. So, can I hand over to Lewis and to, for the presentation? And it's over to you, Lewis.
Thank you Chair. There's two items in this report, the first one being the procurement act. So, I just wanted to update board members in terms of that. And the second item is around an update on the procurement strategy. So, I've got a couple of slides to complement the report itself. Thanks Rob. The procurement act went live on the 24th of February this year, so a couple of months ago. In terms of some of the key changes from the previous legislation, so the first one being simplified and more flexible procedures. So, in terms of the procurement act, we've now got two main procedures, open procedure, which is standard tendering. And then we've got the competitive flexible procedure, which is in essence Cabinet Office saying, we trust you to design a process that is fit for the procurement that you're trying to do. So, I guess in previous legislation, what you might find is we had six processes that didn't always fit the procurement activity and what we were trying to do. Whereas now, actually, we can reflect on what we're trying to buy, whether that's good services works and discuss whether a different procurement process might lead to a better outcome and deliver better value for money for the city and for residents. The second point around enhanced transparency and accountability. So, within the new procurement act, there's around 14 new different notices through the commercial lifecycle. So, that's a significant increase from the previous legislation. That the intention of this is to provide transparency through the entire commercial lifecycle of a contract. So, through the pre-market engagement, through to the procurement process itself, and then following on to that, the contract management phase and termination. This is a change from the previous legislation, but actually will demonstrate to others that we are conducting procurements fairly and transparently as well. And it's not just about the procurement process. It's everything within that lifecycle. The next point is around consideration of national procurement policy statements. So, at the time when it came a few months ago, that wasn't, hadn't been published. That has now been published and covers several key points around delivering value for money, driving economic growth, delivering social value and economic value and building commercial capability to ensure value for money and stronger outcomes. Improving access to opportunities. So, through the increasing transparency notices, we also have a mandatory requirement every year to publish our pipelines of activities. So, all organisations including SMEs and VSCs will have access to upcoming opportunities over the next 18 months. We're in the process at the moment of creating those and they will be published in line with legislation requirements. And finally, the procurement review unit. So, this is a new review unit that's been created by the Cabinet Office, which will be ensuring that we are complying with the procurement act requirements as well. Next slide please, Rob. And just to point on how PAX has prepared for this. So, quite early on, sort of October 23, we established the procurement at working group comprised of key officers from across the council from a procurement perspective. We worked together to make sure that we had a defined implementation plan and we were able to meet the timescales of the 24th of February 2025. We've done a lot of work in updating our key processes and documentation as well. So, as you can imagine, there's quite a lot of procurement documentation, all referencing the previous legislation. It was important that we revised that to reflect the new legislation, but also create new documents as well. In terms of training for procurement officers across the council, so all officers, all relevant officers have sat the Transforming Public Procurement training, which was a 10-hour training by the Cabinet Office. What we've also got as well is several key officers within PAX and other teams who have sat the deep dive sessions, which is three intensive advanced training courses set by the Cabinet Office as well to provide assurances that we've got a lot of officers across the council trained. We've also delivered a lot of training internally. So, a lot of deep dive and overview sessions with services, with senior leaders. And we did do a member briefing at the end of February as well to alert members to the key changes. We've also been working with our regional and core city colleagues to benchmark our implementation with those as well to ensure that we're we've adopted and we're implementing in line with best practice. And then the final point is just supplier communication. So, we've been communicating very frequently with suppliers through this process because we do recognise whilst it is a new thing for the council, it's also new to suppliers as well. So, we wanted to provide that information. That's been through different methods. But just before we went live, we did issue communications to all council suppliers to alert them to the changes and to provide them with information on how to find further procurement act information as well. So, in terms of the procurement strategy areas, so the report details the strategy areas within the existing procurement strategy. The report also highlights some of the key positives that have come from the existing strategy itself. Such as some of the work we've been doing in Lambeth Financial Challenge to reduce spend across the council. We have significantly reduced waivers over the lifetime of the existing procurement strategy as well. We've also had no procurement challenges through the lifetime of this strategy and beyond. From a social value perspective, we've done a lot of work in terms of, we've got a new team and we've been working to embed social value across the council. We've created a social value network across the council as well. And within the previous financial year, we've done a lot of work in both securing and delivering social value within our contracts as well. And local spend has been consistently over 60% during the lifetime of this strategy as well. In terms of commercial opportunities, the report gives a couple of examples of those as well. And then the final bit around enablers. So, from a training perspective, a lot of colleagues in PAX have either sat the SIPs, which is the professional accreditation, or they're on the journey to doing so through the different levels. We are in the process of developing a corporate contract management support team as well to support council officers with managing those contracts to ensure that we're supporting and delivering more and also meeting savings requirements. And we've improved links and communication with council directorates. So, me and my team spend a lot of time with senior leaders and other directorates providing performance information, but also supporting them in terms of their contracts and procurement activity as well. Next slide, Rob. Thank you. So, in terms of some of the work that's been done today, quite early on, what we did was an assessment against the national procurement strategy. This is due to be refreshed, I think, in July this year. So, we will do a similar exercise with any differing requirements from the new one. We also did a SWOT analysis of the team and procurement across the council to identify where some of the opportunities and some of the weaknesses were to take on board for our new strategy. And finally, we also did a strategic context review as well, which is within the appendices. Next slide, Rob. So, in terms of the considerations for the new procurement strategy, a lot of it's staying the same. And that's a key focus, you know, things like value for money, governance and risk, social value. They are of real importance to the council. What we've done through some of this, however, is split out some key areas. So, contract management, we've given it a separate building block because we do think with the new procurement act, that being a key focus, it's something that we really need to focus on within the council. And we have been doing a lot of work with officers as well. We've also put in reform and continuous improvement. So, that includes sort of the procurement act. But it also means that we're looking ahead in terms of how we can improve as a service. And then finally, culture recruitment and retention. We absolutely want procurement, our procurement team to be the one that people want to work for. So, we're looking at how we can influence that and further things as well. So, in terms of the timeline, members will note that I did bring a report a few months ago. So, in essence, the timescales have shifted. That has been, I guess, predominantly due to the work we've been doing on the new procurement act. But also, we did want to align it with the Best City Ambition Review as well. So, in terms of the new timescales, it's intended that we will do another review of the existing procurement strategy within May. We will wait for the review of the outcome of the Best City Ambition and Organizational Plan whilst we're drafting the procurement strategy. Because without that, will we need that to influence our strategy? We'll move to consultation and amendments July to September and seek to get formal approvals by October. And then finally, look to roll out the new procurement strategy from November 25 as well.
Yeah, thank you Lewis for running through the slides and, you know, and through the report. I will open to board members for any questions. councillor Flynn.
Thank you. Thanks very much indeed Lewis. We've discussed it on a few occasions previously. But on your second slide, you mentioned regional and core city council links, presumably including Waikia as well. I just wondered how you're getting on there in terms of economies of scale in procurement terms?
Thanks councillor Flynn. So, in terms of that work, I do, I'm co-chair of the Yorkshire and Humber Strategic Procurement Group, which is comprised of all public, all councils and some others across the region. We have been doing work, I cited some work last year, analysing the contracts, upcoming contracts and supplier spend from across the different councils. That work has been picked up with Crown Commercial Services and we did have a meeting last week to talk about some of the analysis to identify key areas where we could collaborate as a region, but also quite interestingly, where we might be using the same supplier with our neighbouring councils. So, we're, in terms of that work, that's been taken away for us to look at as a region. On the second point, I also have convened a West Yorkshire's had a procurement meeting as well to again do something quite similar, particularly because we're in the same region, but also to look at where we can find key areas to collaborate on as well. So, that work is ongoing. I don't have any current examples to give you councillor Flynn. But please be assured that that work is moving and being driven by leads, as evidenced by me commencing it last year. It's been picked up by Crown Commercial Services, which is good. And we're being used as a bit of a pilot and a test of concept as well. Something successful comes from this. I think the intention from CCS is that we would roll out something nationally as well in the, from a place-based perspective.
Thank you Lewis. Saving Lewis, how will the new procurement strategy look to drive saving on external procurement?
So, I think value for money is a key element of the new procurement act. It's a key element of our existing strategy. It will be of our new one as well. From a pre-procurement perspective, what I would say is that sort of my team will sit down with officers and looks where we can identify savings as well. And we do sort of try and ensure where possible that we are looking at that. Did mention within the slides and within the paper, some of the work we're doing around contract management as well. So, that's applied to new procurements. However, we are mindful that there are existing contracts going on that we do want to get savings from as well. The report does mention some assurance work that was done last year, which delivered significant savings. And from a sort of PAX perspective, what we've been doing is deep dives into existing contracts as well to identify savings where possible or things to make the contract more efficient or increase social value etcetera, which may not have a financial benefit, but does bring benefit to the city.
councillor Timmins, please.
Thanks a lot Lewis. I want to ask about SMEs. So, it's good to see that new legislation put in a greater effort. I actually know that we are doing a lot of work on this. But I would like to see more and more engagement on it if we can. There's a wide range of benefits from doing so. I know in my own ward in Carling and Farquhar, we've got loads of good quality tradespeople that would do a job that we're sometimes getting someone from the area to do. They would do a good job of it and would probably actually get more value for money from it as well. And on this same topic, when we have major projects, so we get a large company to oversee it, for example, Dawson's Corner is about to start in my ward. Do we or can we mandate the project management companies to show that they are doing everything that they can to subcontract elements of that to local businesses? I just think it's good that, you know, when people are driving past these, that they're seeing work vans and so on and so forth from the local area. And you listed all the values from the National Procurement Policy Statement and it absolutely nails each one of them. And then just as an aside, you mentioned about 60% spend being local. Do you have an idea of how much of that adds to small or medium local businesses?
Thanks councillor Timmins. So, I'll just pick your first point around the SMEs and the report does talk about some of the work that we've been doing within PAX to open up those opportunities. So, yes, the procurement act does require us to have consideration of removing those barriers where possible. So, a couple of examples. So, at the moment, we're doing a review of our low-value documentation because we are really mindful that for smaller organisations, they don't have time to wade through 30 pages of of documentation to get to the questions that they need to answer. So, we're doing a lot of work around that to make it easier and to open up those opportunities and not turn away SMEs because we appreciate that it takes a significant amount of their time. I think the second, just around that as well, in collaboration with the University of Leeds, Leeds Beckett and Northern Power Grid, we did do a supplier networking event a couple of months ago, predominantly targeted at the sort of FM construction and trades industries. And that was really well-attended and was an opportunity for SMEs to be notified of opportunities coming up, not just for those four organisations, but for the wider Leeds anchor network as well. I did do a session with those in attendance around top tips for tendering. So, things to look out for when responding to tender opportunities. And then we did a second session around what are some of the barriers to delivering or providing services to the public sector. Again, that was really well received and I did table an item at Leeds Anchor's procurement subgroup last week around the action plan. So, I think some of these issues that SMEs bring up, they're not new. You know, we've been talking about them for years and years. I'm really mindful that in a year's time, I don't just want to have the same conversation or do another event like that. We do want to look at key things. So, again, around document simplification, but things around sort of risk allocation and insurances, you know. What we were hearing from SMEs is that we're setting really, really high insurances that aren't always proportionate. So, we're on it looking at how we can do that, not just for the council, but also for Leeds anchors. So, that if you are someone supplying to public organisations in the city, you know exactly what you're going to get, whether it's, you know, me and my team, whether it's Leeds Beckett, whether it's, you know, the colleges etcetera. So, as you mentioned, we have done, we have done quite a lot of work on that and we do want to continue that further as well. want to continue that further as well. In terms of the second point around major projects, and whether we can mandate that, I'd have to double check what it says in in the legislation, but I just wanted to to mention that from a social value perspective, we do monitor supplier local spend, and that's something that I'm really key on, because I'm mindful that when we're handing, sort of, procuring these larger contracts, particularly in these areas, they are reliant on a local workforce as well, you know, it can't be delivered delivered to the most part from outside of Leeds. So we are doing a lot of work in trying to monitor that local spend, so I can come or go to audit committee to talk about not only the council's spend and how much of it is with SMEs, but also the contracts that we're doing as well. That's something that's missing at the moment that we're looking to do as well. So I'll come back to you on that, councillor Timmins, if that's all right. And then in terms of the local spend, I'm happy to provide a separate note around how much of that is SMEs, et cetera, as well, but we do report back on that sort of annually to audit committee as well, but happy to provide that. So in terms of what we're doing at the moment, Chair, is we're just sort of benchmarking what other core cities have done as well to make sure that ours is in line with best practice. So again, in terms of that engagement, what we were thinking initially was that that would be through our sort of contract managers, et cetera, but I'm happy to review best approach to that. We're just doing some work with with core cities to ask the question as to what they've done as well.
Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lewis. Just really thinking down to kind of grassroots ward level, the hurdles we seem to hit are with things like playground equipment, the Christmas tree sagas, that we're presented as ward members if we're looking to fund something through the community committee with one option, and a price that often is a bit of a shock, like twenty thousand pounds for an accessible roundabout in a playground. So it's hard for us to know kind of what layers there are behind that in terms of procurement of those contracts and the management of those contracts. Yeah, I hope that makes sense.
Thanks councillor Thompson. I can't speak directly to those specific ones, but what I would say is, in in terms of, I think we need to be mindful sometimes that we are we are paying for managed services, aren't we? So officers, et cetera, you know, you might see one price and think it is quite high, but there are, we need to be mindful of total cost of ownership of that, you know. I have officers come to me to say, well, I can get that cheaper, you know, online, et cetera, but it's not always just about doing it online, is it? It's what kind of goes behind that. I will come back to you on those two points, and if there's other other projects that board members would like to bring up as well. But just that, I guess, the broader note is, it's not always just about that price. What I would say is through tendering and competitive tendering, what we will get is the the best price at that moment in time. That's why we would always advise, for example, that we do do longer contracts where where applicable, so we can manage sort of market dynamics. But where we have done a competitive tendering exercise, that is typically the best price that we're going to get. In terms of some of the the points you just made around transparency, et cetera, we do always write reports and demonstrate the procurement process that's being followed. So if you ever have any questions around a particular procurement process, please feed that through to to the relevant person or myself. I'm happy to respond on that as well. Hopefully that answered your questions.
Thank you councillor Thompson, and thank you, Lewis, and well done. Keep up the good work as well. And Mariana, do you want to?
Yeah, can I just use this as an opportunity to plug? Because Lewis mentioned earlier the reason for the delay, and one of those reasons is about Best City Ambition and Organisational Plan. It is on the agenda for the next Strategy and Resources scrutiny board, you know, very much around that kind of pre-decision type work that we want to do. But it was, the approach was agreed at Exec Board last week, so maybe if Rob can send the link, there are some key questions in there, and if you can promote that Best City Ambition refresh, we'd be really grateful. And then actually, by the time we get to scrutiny then in in June, we'll hopefully be able to have a richer conversation than it just being in the in the papers. Sorry, cheap plug there, but really important stuff.
Thank you, Mariana, and thank you, Lewis, once again. Councillor Cooper, do you want to have a final comment on this item?
Very briefly, thank you, Chair. And just a point to note, really, that the member training session for the procurement strategy was very well attended, wasn't it, Lewis? So so it just goes to show, sometimes it may well be subject matter that that you're looking at as well, and how interested certain members might well be in in different things as well. But the training was very well delivered and and very well received by members who attended, so I'm sure that that if we can send an update following the scrutiny board report today to those members who did attend who are not here, I think that would that would be useful as well. And just to thank Lewis and his small team, I have to say, that that is dealing with all of these, you know, really big contracts, when you think about, you know, the millions and millions of pounds that we're talking about, and and hopefully the the new procurement strategy will deliver some real improvements for us as a as an organisation, and we'll be able to bring those back through to scrutiny board so that you can follow that progress as well. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. Once again, Lewis, thank you, and pass our appreciation to your small team, as councillor Cooper says. And thank you, Mariana. Are we happy with the report on recommendation page ninety seven, members? Yes? Thank you. We now move to our twenty four twenty five end of year summary statement. This sports the annual report process, which will see the annual report from all five board members at boards come to consideration at the full council meeting in July. Over to you, Rob.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just fairly briefly, Chair, if you don't mind. So each year, each scrutiny board produces a end of year statement, which summarises the board's work, which is at appendix one. It's part of the constitutional, at article six of the council's constitution, that the the responsible officer for scrutiny produces an annual report, and as the Chair just said, that goes to council in July, to full council in July. So this is here for member comment and consideration before it is approved and then will become published. One thing to note, and I didn't mention this in the pre-make, is I did include councillor Kidder in the board membership office, she's no longer with, no longer on the board, so that, I'm assuming that's okay, but just to highlight that she has contributed to the to the to the work of the board.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, thank you. Any questions, board members, to Rob on this statement, end of year statement? Nope? So are we happy to approve the report recommendation on page one oh nine? Yep? Thank you. We can now move to our final agenda item, which is the work programme. Guests are welcome to stay to hear discussion, but if not, thank you for attending today. Rob, over to you.
Yes, thanks councillor Khan. Yes, so it's the usual consideration of the work programme item that we take at each meeting. Appendix one has the work programme that's now complete effectively for twenty twenty four twenty five. Appendix two is the latest exec board minutes. The main difference is that obviously the report contains some draft dates for our board meetings next year, and also highlights a few areas of of work that we've identified, so the procurement strategy being one, also the people strategy, the pay date changes, and the work on the, the, sorry, the staff discipline review, which we've highlighted previously. So just to note those comments, and then obviously open to member comments. Thank you, Chair.
Any comments on que, yes, councillor Inte, please?
Very briefly, Chair. Going forward, I know I might not be on this committee, if we don't know yet, but I've been contacted by a few residents about our work programme in relation to casual workers and the information that we have on active leads in particular, and things like feedback from interviews, the data around them, which seems to be lacking in some reports, or a few concerns from residents in Bramwell, that that wasn't being scrutinised most effectively. So if we can look into that in future, that would be really helpful to residents. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Inte. Yes, happy to take a note and and follow up with the successor board next meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this report? Nope? Or councillor Timmins?
Just one really, one really quickly. In terms of services that generate revenues that we we have discussed here, it would also be worth us getting the commercial manager, so who's kind of responsible for increasing the amount of revenue, to see what what they are doing and be able to question on that work.
Thanks councillor Timmins. Yeah, you did mention this a few months ago, didn't you, I think, not in the meeting though, I think. So I did, I have contacted the the commercial manager, so perhaps I need to speak to you a bit more detail, Chair, and perhaps involving you as well around the specifics of that, because I think it's quite a wide-ranging issue. So if we can narrow the scope down a bit, then then that'd be great. So obviously, through the Chair, we can, I'm sure we can do that. Is that is that something that would be okay? Yeah, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Are we happy with the report on recommendation page one two one? Yes? Thank you. That brings us to end of today's business, and thank you for your attendance and contribution today. Can I take this opportunity to thank councillor Thompson as well for entering the marathon? Please join me, give a huge round of applause as well. Thank you. And our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the second of June twenty twenty five, at ten thirty a.m., with our usual meeting, pre-meetings, ten a.m., board members subject to agreement of the full council meeting next month. Thank you, have a lovely afternoon. Thank you.